Okay, I have six o'clock according to my clock. I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Trish Clee will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clee.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddy. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Kelly. Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I am here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we have a public hearing on Resolution 2275 relative to the adoption of the Nashua Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan, and I'm gonna call on Doria Brown, our Energy Manager, to give us a presentation. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Doria. I'm the Energy Manager for the city. Super excited to be here with you all to do a presentation on community power. This has been an initiative that I started working on when I first started working here in 2019. So it's very surreal to be at this phase where we're looking at possibly adopting an aggregation plan. And I have this presentation here to bring us through what an aggregation plan is all about and what that means for the next steps for Nashua in our venture to do community power. So I have a short agenda here. You can look at it. I'm not gonna go through each point. The first point is what is community power? Community power is a program that will allow us to pool our resources as energy users in Nashua to be able to drive down our electricity rates. In Nashua, we have over 48,000 electricity accounts here. And if we all use that power to go out to bid for power supply, we'd be able to drive down our rates. And that's what community power does. And the way we are able to do that is because of RSA 53E, which is legislation that passed in June of 2019, which allows for community power programs to be run by communities like Nashua on an opt-out basis. In the past, you were able to do a community power program, but only on an opt-in basis. So to be very plain here, this is an opt-out program. The legislative intent was to encourage voluntary, cost-effective, and innovative solutions to local needs with careful consideration of local conditions and opportunities, to read it verbatim. So again, what is community power? It is the ability to purchase energy supply to lower prices and create price stability. For example, this summer, we saw rates skyrocket from, I think it was 10 cents per kilowatt hour to 22 cents per kilowatt hour on the Eversource rate, because they go out to bid for power supply twice per year. They go out to bid in December and then, I believe, in June. And with a community power program, we would be going out to bid for power supply when we get the best rates possible. So that's how we would drive down electricity rates and also use the buying power of a community with 48,000 accounts to do so. So utilities will continue to deliver that power. A lot of people, when they hear about a community power program, they get very worried. Where is my energy bill gonna come from? Is it gonna come from Eversource? Is it gonna come from Nashua Community Power? Or somebody I've never heard of before? No, it will still come from Eversource. And Eversource will also be maintaining electricity lines. So all those power lines you see outside, all that delivery of electricity to your home will be maintained by Eversource, as would electricity bills. So community power also adds other benefits outside of lowering rates. We would be able to put money towards renewable energy projects, which would, again, further drive down rates, use time-of-use rate options in the future as metering gets updated in our area. And we would be able to look into more solar, electricity storage, and vehicle support programs as well as this program evolves. This isn't something that would happen right from the start in a community power program. And here are some more of the benefits. I'm not gonna go through this slide verbatim, but if you wanna take a second to look, that would be great, and I think you also have hard copies. So here is an electricity bill from Eversource with a much better rate than we're getting right now. But I wanted to kind of go over what would be changing on an energy bill. So first part of your bill is the supply side, and the second part of your bill is the delivery side of the electricity bill. We would only be affecting the supply side of that bill, while delivery would be remaining in the hands of Eversource and as would those rates. Now, to get to the second side of the bill, when you get your electricity bill, there's the first half that says "supply" and the second half that says "delivery." That spot on top usually says "service provider" or... Sorry. Yes, supplier. And right now, it is Eversource, but now it will say Nashua Community Power when this program launches. But your electricity bill will still be coming from the same place and look the same. The only thing that would change is supplier Nashua Community Power, because it would be the rate that Nashua Community Power negotiates for residents in Nashua. So here are some key points that I really wanna drive in and repeat, because it's something that a lot of people find confusing with community power. Eversource will continue to deliver electricity to customers. The Board of Aldermen would be authorized to contract for necessary professional services and power supplies to launch Nashua Community Power. For example, we need to decide what kind of provider we'd be using to launch this program. Starting with this aggregation plan is just the first step in launching Nashua Community Power, because this is our plan kind of laying out how we're going to do it. But there are a multitude of decisions that this board needs to make between now and when we would potentially launch a program in the spring. So it's here where all of those decisions would be made. This is really just the beginning of that process. And participation in community power is completely voluntary. This is an opt-out program, so everybody would be automatically enrolled onto the Nashua Community Power rate unless they had a third-party supplier beforehand or they had special circumstances on their bill, which would be identified, where they'd have to stay with the Eversource rate. But if somebody was rolled over to the Nashua Community Power rate, they would be able to voluntary opt-out of that program and either stay on the Eversource rate or negotiate for their own third-party supply. So let's talk about the electric aggregation plan. So the Board of Aldermen designated the Nashua Aggregation Committee as the Electric Aggregation Committee when we really started this journey back in 2020. The Board of Aldermen tasked the committee with preparing the electric aggregation plan, which is really kind of the bread and butter and detailed explanation on how a program like this would work in Nashua. So if you haven't gotten a chance to yet, I really suggest that you read through the plan. We had to hold two public hearings in order for us to comply with RSA 53E. The first public hearing was on 11/29 in the Aggregation Committee, and this is the second one. So we are completely in compliance with the law per creating an aggregation plan and adopting it as of today. So what is the purpose of this plan? It defines program goals and objectives. It defines governance, how we going to govern this program here in the Board of Aldermen. It summarizes the implementation process, and it commits the city of Nashua to starting this program, but it doesn't commit us to launching a program. So one question that I've gotten multiple times is when or if this program or this plan is signed, does that automatically start Nashua Community Power? And will customers be getting a new default rate from Nashua Community Power tomorrow? Absolutely not. This is really just the start of the discovery process for finding out what rates are going to be. And I do have another slide of kind of an overview of what it would look like if Nashua Community Power launches with rates in the spring. So this is just an overview on the chapters of the plan. Again, if you wanna take a look at it, if you haven't already, I highly suggest that you do. So Nashua Community Power will serve as the default supplier on an opt-out basis. It will offer innovative services and rate options to customers on an opt-in basis, and I'll go over those on another slide. And it will operate on a competitive basis. We currently live in a competitive market for electricity. Iceland is the competitive market that, I believe, Connecticut, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont, and Maine sit in. And it is a competitive market where anybody can go out to bid for a third-party supplier whenever they'd like. There are multiple people in Nashua that have opted out of the Eversource rate right now when they saw electricity rates skyrocket from that 10 to 22 cents. It's been done. It's something that I would have advised people to do. But now, with a community power program, we'll be able to do that and effectively use our larger portfolio to drive down rates even more if we go out to bid together for supply. It will be self-funded. No taxpayer dollars are allowed to be used for a community power program per RSA 53E. The program needs to be completely funded through rates. And that happens already when Eversource goes out to bid for power supply. When you get that 22-cent rate, all of the time, effort, not community service, customer service, all of that is baked into that 22-cent rate per kilowatt hour. And we would be doing the same with the rate for Nashua Community Power. We would be baking in all the customer service, all of the financials that go into going out to bid for power supply. All of that would be baked into the rate that Nashua Community Power comes up with, which is the same thing that utilities do when they go out to bid for power supply. The Board of Aldermen, with advisory support from the Aggregation Committee and Energy Manager, that's me, will contract for necessary services and power supplies. Again, this is something that would happen in a Board of Aldermen meeting. You would get the... These are the rates that we've come up with for Nashua Community Power. This is the Eversource rate right now. And it would be up to the Board of Aldermen to decide if they wanna launch a program with that rate. So again, that's another decision that needs to be made before this program launches. Just to reiterate again, this is just the beginning of being able to get the data and information we would need to be able to establish those rates and launch. So customer notification and enrollment process. This is something that a lot of people have questions on. So let's say we do decide on a rate and we decide to launch Nashua Community Power. We would need to, 30 days before launching the program, send out a mailer to all customers affected by the changeover to the new default rate, which would be Nashua Community Power. So everybody would get a letter in the mail, and we would do a multitude of different advertising campaigns to let everyone know the rate was changing. But that mailer is really what needs to legally happen per RSA 53E. And in that mailer, they would have all the ways that they could opt out of the program if they are not happy with that rate. Customers currently on default energy service provided by Eversource will be able to decline, opt-out, just to be clear, it is an opt-out program. If a customer is already getting their power from a competitive supplier, nothing will change for them. Because if you're already on a competitive supply contract, actually, switching to a different supplier could cause you to incur a fee. So we would not be flipping anybody who is already on a third-party competitive supplier account. For example, if you have already contracted with Direct Energy, you would have to opt into Nashua Community Power on your own conscience just to make sure that it is your choice if you incur any sort of fee for switching to Nashua Community Power. So that is one of the only instances where you wouldn't automatically be enrolled in the default rate. New utility customers will get a similar opt-out notice. So if you move to Nashua and you are building a home or something and you decide to put in electricity lines, you'll get a similar notice that Nashua Community Power exists. This is the rate that Nashua Community Power is on right now. This is the Eversource rate. You will be automatically enrolled in Nashua Community Power. Please opt out if you would like to be on the Eversource rate or negotiate your own third-party supply contract. All Nashua Community Power default services customers will also or always be able to know the fixed rate at least 30 days in advance as we switch out rates. So the first time you all vote on a rate will not be the last time you vote on a rate. It'll either be maybe a year or two years out from that initial rate vote, you'll be voting again. So the Board of Aldermen will always get to decide if we'd like to keep going with Nashua Community Power and offer new rates and ensure that we're able to make rates that are lower than Eversource. So this decision would ultimately be in your hands. So here's an example of what a product might look like for Nashua Community Power. So you'll have the Nashua Community Power default rate, which meets renewable energy portfolio standards. And that rate would have to, according to our plan, meet or beat the utility default rate in order for our program to launch. And then we might offer other products like Green Star or Prime. And those products would have more renewable energy content for people who are very environmentally conscious and wanna opt in to have more renewable energy in their portfolio. That would make the rate probably higher, and that would be a conscious decision that somebody would have to make if they wanna have 50% or 100% renewable energy. It's something that people already do in Nashua and other communities if they just wanna be very environmentally conscious and say that they either have 50% or 100% renewable energy coming to them. We just wanted to be able to offer as many different rates or styles of energy coming in as possible to make sure that all Nashua customers would be happy with Nashua Community Power. So choosing a partner to implement Nashua Community Power has been an interesting journey. I don't have a recommendation right now on either way, but I do know that Nashua Community Power cannot run from a department of two people in the Sustainability Department. There are 48,000 accounts. I'm not that great at customer service. I think I could take two calls before I lose my mind. But working with a partner would be very helpful. So there are two models here. There's the Coalition Model, which is the, wow, CPCNH, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And then there's the Broker Model. And there are pros and cons for each of these. The Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is a group of communities that have come together to start a 501(c)(4) to be able to pull customers together and share services. For example, they'd be able to share customer service services, being able to go out to bid for power supply. All that money that goes into starting up a program would be shared amongst those communities and be able to offer lower rates, because you have one entity doing all of that for all of these groups together. And then you have the Broker Model, which has its pros and cons as well, where we work with one specific brokerage group that only is working with Nashua Community Power. We're not partnered with any other communities, but we're going out to bid for power supply. That brokerage staff is offering us expert staff, customer service, everything we need to launch a program. So we'll be weighing the pros and cons of that in the Aggregation Committee and hopefully giving you all a finalized report of what that suggestion is. But I didn't think I could give a presentation without sharing both today, just to make sure you all are aware. So, oh, I kind of flipped through that. Questions and comments? I'm gonna open up the floor now to...
Alderman Dowd. Alderman Dowd has a question.
Okay.
I have a question. Right now, on our solar projects and our dams, we're selling the excess power, if you will, to Eversource. Would we still have to sell it to Eversource or could we sell it to whoever we selected for our new rate?
So that's a really good and creative question. So right now, we are under a contract when we sell energy. So we wouldn't be able to even think about how that would work if we were to be able to sell that energy to our CCA or to Nashua Community Power until 2024. So there's a possibility that that could work, but it would have to be financially beneficial to make sure that we'd be able to continue the upkeep of the hydropower plants and that we aren't losing all that. So I would do further exploration.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you. A question for Madam President. So can we ask any question or should we be... Because I got a question, but it's not really a clarifying question. Should we wait till the meeting to do that or...
You can ask.
Okay. So, I mean, it all seems like something very positive. So my question is, what are the downfalls, downside of it? What are the negatives? Just so, we're looking at those as well and wanna make sure that, you know, we're making the right decision.
That is a great question. I am actually a negative thinker, so I constantly think about the cons before I think about the positives. And for me, this is a little bit hard to come up with some of these cons. Right now, with signing this aggregation plan, there aren't really any cons, because we wouldn't be launching a program. But further down the line, some of the cons would be not being able to beat the utility rate. That would be a lot of time and resources that we would use. But I don't foresee that happening, because it's a competitive market. Nashua is a huge city, and I think that we should be able to beat that default rate. So that would be a huge con, but not being able to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Just big picture, what does success look like if this program's implemented?
Success looks like getting everybody's electricity bills right, you know? Like driving down those rates so that we don't see giant fluctuations in costs. We would be able to stabilize prices. No more, or hopefully, if we can avoid it, 10 cent increases with a month's notice. For example, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, they go out to bid for power supply a little bit more dynamically and creatively than Eversource does. And they were able to keep their rates much lower than Eversource was able to. And we're looking to do something similar to them when we go out to bid for power supply. And further down the road, even more success for a program like that would be to be able to invest in our own renewable energy to further drive down prices and have a bigger renewable energy portfolio for Nashua residents owned by Nashua Community Power, which would essentially be owned by the community.
Follow-up.
One follow-up I had, and I did read through a lot of the plan. And I understand that there are no tax dollars that are gonna be going to support this. However, there are some costs related to this that are baked in, if you will, to the rates. Do you have a cost estimate, what it would cost to run Nashua Community Power?
That is, again, a very good question. Off the top of my head, I do not have a cost estimate on what it would be to run Nashua Community Power. But if we were to get this plan through, I would be able to get the data I need or Nashua Community Power or the Community Power Coalition or a broker would be able to get the data they need to make those estimates to be able to paint that bigger picture and inform decision-making in the Board of Aldermen.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Clee.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of questions, and I'm actually gonna start with the one that I've already asked you, but more for the public. It's been on the news that Eversource is going to the PUC to ask for a 10% decrease in their rate. How would that affect this plan? I know you already gave me the answer, but I want others to hear it.
So it's a 2-cent reduction or a 10% reduction that should save people, I think, $15 on average every month on their electricity bill. So that's a few more groceries. That's great. But what that tells me is that the energy market is getting better, and we would be able to get better rates as we go out to bid for power supply at a better time of the year. December has to be the worst time to go out to bid for power supply. I know, because I've done it before, and it's an adventure. Let's just say that. But in April or May or June, when we launch this program, that is a much better time to go out to bid for power supply, and we would be able to get lower rates. I think if crazy stuff doesn't happen, like another pandemic or invasion or something, we should be able to get lower rates than the default Eversource supply rate.
Thank you very much. And I have a couple more, if I may, Madam President. One is, you had mentioned something about that this is an opt-out with...
Yes.
Exception.
Many times.
And I keep pushing it to, with the exception of if you're already on a third party. Or you said something about special circumstances.
Yes.
What would a special circumstances be?
An extremely grandfathered solar array. There are some rules where if you are net metering a certain way, you can't be on a third-party supplier or you wouldn't get the credits back unless you were on the Eversource rate. So there are a few circumstances that you'd have to deal with there.
Okay. And the other question, you already kind of answered it. My question was that would the BOA, would the Board of Aldermen have to approve any rate changes each time? And you answered that to yes. Would that delay, because of the way the process, I assume that we'd have to do some sort of legislation, would that process take time and actually hinder being able to take advantage of a good rate?
No.
Okay.
So since this is a CCA, the way I buy energy for the city is I need to, I have like a five-hour window when I go out to bid for power supply, where I need to say yes or no to this rate. And if I don't, I might not get that rate tomorrow. That wouldn't be the case for a CCA. They would be able to hold these rates, since it's such a large account. But there would be some, like, increases minimal in price to be able to hold that rate. And that would allow you to go through this process as the Board of Aldermen and make a decision on if you'd like to move forward with that rate.
Okay. And again, just my last question. You mentioned about the optional products. And when we roll it out, we're not gonna be doing those optional products of the greater than 50% or 100% renewable.
Again, that's a decision for the Board of Aldermen.
Oh, okay.
There are so many choices that need to be made in order for this program to launch. But if you all decide that you don't wanna offer different products, you don't have to offer them. You can just offer a default electricity rate. It's your choice, or it's your vote. Yeah.
We would probably be looking for your recommendation as to how to roll this out. So thank you. And again, thank you to and the committee members that are here. I know you worked really hard on this, so thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Alderman Lopez, did you have your hand up earlier?
No.
No. Okay. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a quick statement and then a comment. So tonight, we're not voting for the whole thing. We're voting to start the process tonight in our meeting, correct?
Yes.
So we could vote yes tonight, and then down the road, when this comes before us, we could also say no or change some of the things or whatnot. So we're not blinded by tonight, other than you guys starting to build, go out and find rates and all that kind of stuff, correct?
Yep. What you're doing is allowing us to go to the next part of the process to get really detailed data from our utilities, which we really need to be able to do those financial models to know how much is it really gonna cost to do Nashua Community Power? What does our customer base really look like in usage and all of that? And it's also giving us the ability to show that we're serious about this for working with these providers, like the Community Power Coalition or a broker.
Okay. And second question, last question. So when somebody's on a hardship or they're getting energy assistance from the state, they're not often able to go to a supplier without... they're not often able to go to a supplier without dropping that. Are those going to be, you know, opt-ins as well? Or are they going to be put on Nashua Community Power? Or are they going to lose their hardship? Or do you know anything about, is that going to be one of those exceptions?
I don't think they should use, lose their hardship, but I do want to double-check on that, because I don't want to misspeak on such an important issue.
And it could be, I mean, it could turn into an opt-in, or that they have to opt-in and keep the hardship, or whatever. But I'm just curious. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Alderman Gavain.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. So should this be approved tonight, which I am in favor of? What does the timeline look like going forward?
So the timeline is, well, the Aggregation Committee is going to be working. It's aggressive. So we would have to make a decision between January and February on what route we want to go. Do we want to work with the Coalition or a broker? And if we work with the Coalition, there's a multitude of documents that need to be reviewed and agreed upon by the Board of Aldermen, including cost-sharing agreements, how reserve funds are going to be used, to name just a few. And then on the broker's side, I'm sure that they'll have paperwork and stuff that you'll have to phone on as well. There's also a possibility to be running an RFP to help with that informed decision-making process as well. So that's just January and February. And then between then, we'd be going out to bid for power supply and shaping the program. And then mailers would be going out, if you all choose to vote on a rate and you vote yes to launching the program, that would probably be, I want to say, March. And then mailers would be going out at the beginning of March, and a program could be launching in April. As soon as April would be the earliest.
Alderman Dowd.
Just for clarification, you said 54,000 customers. Does that include large and small?
Forty-eight, sorry.
Okay. Does that include large and small companies as well?
Yes. And a lot of large companies are already on a third-party supplier rate, but a few of them have, in the past, come to me and said, "We're going to launch this program. We'd be very interested in participating." So there's opportunity there.
Alderman Lopez.
I was wondering if there's any controls, because I had a similar thought to, suspiciously similar to Alderman Dowd. Hypothetically, Alderman Dowd's company invented its antimatter reactor, whatever, and decided they didn't want to be a third-party person, but we were already, or they did want to be a third-party, or subscribe to one, and they were already on the aggregate plan. Does that, would that change our rates if we suddenly lost a major utilizer? Or does it just go by number of people participating as purchasers?
So it goes by load. Load is important. It's how many kilowatt-hours a group is using, and kilowatt-hours are directly related to how much money is going in and out of the program. So if we were to lose a big user, it shouldn't affect rates, because that fluctuation should be baked into the risk part of our rate coming from a third-party provider. So we, we should be all right. But if, if a bunch of people were to leave the program, like 90% of everybody on the rate, that would probably prompt an emergency meeting and decision-making process on if we want to end Nashua Community Power, or do something different with the rates. But again, that's what would happen to a utility as well, if a bunch of customers abandoned the program.
I think that, I think that'll happen in that Christmas story. So there are controls in place where if a major, if businesses, for example, wouldn't be able to put any kind of disproportionate pressure on this versus private property owners, or something like that.
They shouldn't, but realistically, most major businesses went out to bid for power supply in a really good time, February 2020, and they probably would be better off staying on their rates than on our rate anyway. So I don't think that's something we should be too worried about, but I'm really happy that you're asking that question, because, again, very important.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clay, and then Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you again, Madam President. You did talk about that we, because we'll be watching, so we won't have that 10 cents jumper. At least, we hope we wouldn't have like a 10 cents jump.
We would do our best not to.
Right. So keeping that in mind, how often do you think that we would have a rate change, whether it's up or down, or kind of going back to coming to the board and we having to make the decision, and City Hall does not move fast, so.
So that is dependent on what we decide to do. If we decide to work with the Coalition or a broker, it could be at sometimes every six months, maybe, or it could be every year or every other year. It just depends on what we were able to lock in for rates and for how long. So there wouldn't be a consistent renew period until, I think, further into the program and Nashua Community Power is more established.
A follow-up on that one, if I may. That was kind of what you had said there. You said the lock-in, and it could be for six months or so on. If we were to lock in at, say, 14 cents, and then suddenly there was a drop, would we be able to change that? Or are we actually locked into that for whatever the six months, or whatever year we, however long we signed to it?
So that's the, the exciting and interesting part of a Community Power program. Energy would be purchased at all times, because you would be managing a portfolio of energy. You would buy certain units from third-party suppliers for an extended period of time. Then you'd buy other units on the wholesale market. You would have a regular fluctuation in price there, but you'd be able to stabilize prices based on where you locked in before for previous contracts. And that management would be happening at all times. So let's say rates plummet to 5 cents, like they did in 2020. We'd be able to take advantage of that plummeting, and then when it's time to refresh rates and send out those mailers again, that would reflect that really good buying that we did at that time.
Okay. And just a clarification, if I may. You, I know you've said it, but I want to repeat it. If someone is in this, with us, as part of the city, and they've opted in, and they chose to go back to Eversource or a third-party, there are no penalty fees for leaving or coming in at any point in time. Is that correct?
No.
And you said a change would generate a postcard to every, is it going to be every resident or every property owner? And the reason I ask that is because some people are renting their home or their apartment, but they pay their own electric bill, so.
Yep. So a big part of getting this plan passed is to be able to access more detailed data from Eversource, and that includes electricity accounts and the addresses associated with them, and the names of the people who are paying those bills. So those mailers would go directly to those people, the customer, not the building owner. And that's the data we really need, because we know who owns the homes, because, I mean, it's the city of Nashua, assessing and all that. But Eversource knows who's paying the electricity bills, and we need that data to be informed and send out those mailers.
And I apologize, but I do have one. Some people do all their billing and everything online.
Yeah.
So they don't even get a mailed electric bill. We would still make sure that this information would get mailed to them and not, because I know when I spoke to Richard and said to him, "Oh, what is our bill?" And he said, "Oh, I don't know. I have to go and look." And he got online. So he just does an automatic payment on it and may not have seen that postcard, but we're going to actually do physical mailers all the time.
We would do physical mailers whenever there is a rate change, because that is how to legally run a Community Power program per RSA 53E. If you don't have mailers, that is in violation.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. When we spent time on the phone yesterday, and I appreciate it, you were really patient, and you answered my questions, and I appreciate it. But we talked about the term that's mentioned in the report about critical mass.
Yes.
And as you were going through your presentation, what I realized is, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the percentages, right now, 17, approximately 17% of the Nashua residents are on an alternative supplier for their electricity. If this were to go into effect, essentially, it would be 83% of Nashuaans would then be in an alternative, well, it would be 100%, because of the 17% that are currently not with Eversource, they, they would need to opt-in. But everybody else would be automatically enrolled, and they would need to opt-out. So essentially, your critical mass is 100%, less the 17 of the people that are already in a alternative. So really, that, that critical mass becomes 83%, and you have to wait to see where the numbers fall out. So my question is, am I going in the right direction with this math, and that 83% of those Nashuaans would then be Nashua Community Power customers?
Yes. I believe so, but I, to be 100% positive on your answer, I kind of need to see that on a whiteboard.
Yeah.
But I, my, my first notion is yes. I think you're correct.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. One more question, then I'm going to, I've given a lot of latitude, because it's new, but I'd really like to get into the public comment. So I'll allow one more question.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Just one more quick question. So you talked about the, kind of the information period, where you'll be sending out mail and doing other work like that. Where's that money coming from, that startup money, if you will? Because you're not in taking any money off of bills before that. So if there's no taxpayer money being used, where, where is that seed money coming from?
So that is where working with a vendor partner is very helpful. That vendor would be putting up that money to begin with, and then we would be paying back the cost through our rates, which is something we currently do in Eversource rates. So the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, I think, has $750,000 in capital to be able to do that, along with other groups that are investing time and money into that as well. And then a broker would be able to do something similar there, because they already have customers and are an established company.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I'm going to take testimon, thank you, Doria. You're going to stick around, right?
Of course.
Okay. I'm going to open up for testimony in favor of Resolution 2275. Anyone, you come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record?
Not geared for short people. Carrie Spear. The address is 9 Columbia, right here in Ward, well, Ward 3, up the street. I'm speaking now as a homeowner, and I am for this. My concern as a homeowner is, and this is a couple of comments, and maybe it's a question. I'm not really sure. The, the alternate products that can be offered, one of them was 50% renewable, one of them was 100% renewable. Those suppliers are buying resource, are buying renewable energy certificates. They're not providing any benefit other than possibly a lower price to the people of Nashua. So we're not going to get any renewable energy benefit out of it. And the renewable energy market, if you look at it, is very up and down, up and down. So you can't be sure about the price on those things. And they're being gained all the time. So I'm not so sure those renewable alternate sources are really going to be as stable as we may like. The other thing, we have two sections to the market, or two sections of our oils, of our energy supply. One of them is the average energy that we use, and the other one is what happens when there's an emergency, or we get a really severe cold snap. We're going to be stuck with whatever Eversource can give us, or actually, we're going to be stuck with whatever ISO New England gives us. So there's going to be additional prices built in when bad things happen. Just, it's not going to be all rosy. The other thing is that the real energy benefits, I see things happening in other communities with transactive energy, with community microgrids, where people are actually bartering for energy from their neighbors, where we can really do some substantial stuff. And I'm not, and while this plan is showing, well, in any time, while a whole bunch of people act together, they get better prices. I mean, that's just a fact. But what I'm not seeing is a path, a serious path towards taking advantage of some of the things that the other communities are doing, like transactive energy, microgrids, and there's a bunch of other innovative ideas. And since we're building schools now, and buildings now with more and more solar panels on the roof, it's perfect for these microgrid kind of things, where the energy cost would be so much lower. And I'd like to see a path that gets us to that really, a real renewable, low-cost energy path. And it doesn't sound like we're going in that direction at all. We're just looking at the price right now, and that's it. And that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else with testimony in favor?
Good evening. Frank Tees, 93 Concord Street. And for full disclosure, I was part of the Aggregation Committee, so I may be a little biased. I do want to say I'm pretty proud of the work this committee has done. I was impressed with Doria's leadership in her presentation here tonight. And something Alderman Sullivan said earlier, in my mind, if one person takes advantage of this program, that's kind of a win. Obviously, we'd like to have a lot more than one. But really, the win is we're providing another alternative. And it's my opinion, by voting today to move forward, we're doing nothing more than allowing this group to move forward, collect more data, and come back before you. So I appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Testimony in favor? Name an address for the record, please. Name an address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm Lawrence Lutton, in 47 Concord Street in Nashua. And one of the things that this is important for me, I'm also on the committee, is that I live in a historic home, the historic district, with a slate roof that's not suitable for solar, myself. And so I want the option of being able to purchase green energy and support green energy in an aggregated way, and to be able to join with the rest of my community in purchasing green energy. So for me, this is a way in which to have a practical means for a person who can't put solar cells on his roof to be able to promote and purchase green energy. Thank you.
I'm going to call for testimony in opposition. Anyone have testimony in opposition to Resolution 2275? Seeing none, I will call again in favor, testimony in favor. Once again, testimony in opposition. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. Well, for the record, Alderman Moran joined us at 6:35. Alderman Clumman has joined us at 6:37. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the December 13th Special Meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. We are adjourned at 6:49 PM. We'll start back up at 7:30. Thank you.